Just before I go any further, I'm going to thank Spennymore. I know John, the chief executive, has already thanked Spennymore. But I'd like to thank Spennymore Leisure Centre for what they have done over the last ten months or nine, ten months on your behalf, members. So, thank you to Spennymore. Thank you very much.[918.01][918.01](Applause). Before we commence today's business, could I ask everyone in the chamber to switch off, make silent their mobile phones, please? Before we move on to the business on the agenda, I would like to welcome you all back to County Hall here in the chamber. It's fantastic again. This is the first full council meeting we've had in County Hall since the coronavirus pandemic started in 2020. Given that we are in different surroundings for this meeting, I would like to remind you all of the housekeeping rules for this meeting. You will note that there is still a one-way system in operation in the council chamber. Therefore, if you need to leave the chamber at any point, please do so following the one-way system as you leave and enter the room. Face masks and social distancing are no longer mandatory. However, I would ask that you consider wearing face masks if you move around the chamber. The windows will be open periodically to allow and provide ventilation. As in all of our previous council meetings, any requests to speak must be made using your voting handset. If you encounter any problems with your voting handset, please raise your handset in the air and a member of committee services will assist you. In these circumstances, I would be grateful if members could consider towards those members of staff approaching along with their face masks. Once invited to speak, please stand up and face forward and switch on the closest microphone to you. Before I move on to today's business, details on the agenda, I would also like to welcome to the meeting members of the public. You are very welcome to attend and observe the proceedings. However, I request politely that you do not disrupt the meeting, please. Can we move to item one, the minutes? Of the meeting held on the 23rd of February 2022. Can I have a mover, please?
Yeah, Chair, can I move them, please?
Can I have a seconder, please?
Second minute, Chair.
Are the minutes agreed, members?
Agreed.
Thank you. Can we move to item two, declarations of interest? Does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any item of business on the agenda? Thank you. Can we move to item three, the chairman's announcements? Colleagues, can I start my announcements today by congratulating councillor Curtis Bahari on his election to the Ferry Hill Electoral Division? Welcome to the meeting, Curtis. I hope you find your time on the council as interesting and forward experience, rewarding experience.[1121.01][1121.01](Laughter/Applause). Secondly, the gradualism of COVID restrictions has enabled me to attend some civic events over the last month, some of which have included, and I'd just like to share these with your members, the World Day of Prayer service in St Joseph's Church in Broome's, Durham High School for Girls, production of anything good at the Gala Theatre. Oh, fantastic, absolutely. St Cootbridge Day service at Durham Cathedral and fame of the High Sheriff's Awards at Usher College in recognition of those groups and communities and encourage useful and beneficial pursuits for local young people. This year's awards recognised young groups who work with people affected by mental health issues and young offenders to help turn their lives around. And also youth groups, groups who work with young people, supporting them to be upstanding citizens and deter from criminal activities. Another fantastic event. Finally, before we move on to the next agenda, can I ask again that everyone is respectful to each other during the meeting? Robust debate is part of the democratic process, but please respect the views of others and do not point fingers during debate. It does not approach with a shout at other councils across the floor during the debate. We have microphones which allow everybody to be heard, so please use them when speaking. Thank you, members. Can we move to item four, the leader's report? Can I invite the leader of the council to present her report, please?
Thanks, Chair. Good morning, everyone, and I hope everyone's well and welcome back to the chamber. Who would have imagined that two years ago today, as the country entered a national lockdown, that it would be this long before we would meet back here for full council? A particular welcome to all our new members from last May and to Curtis for his first full council meeting. Since we last met, events in Ukraine have very much overshadowed all else that is happening in the world. I am sure you will all share my horror and sadness at the situation. I would like to place on record thanks to everyone in here and across the county who have supported the Ukrainian people in the past few weeks and for the support that we know that will continue into the future. We have always been a welcoming and inclusive county, something which is evidenced by our successful involvement in schemes to resettle refugees from Syria and Afghanistan. I know that County Durham will once again be keen to extend that hand of friendship to those in need. The government recently announced two schemes to support Ukrainian refugees coming to this country. We are still awaiting some of the detail, but we know that local authorities will have a significant role to play. We will keep you updated as we hear more, but would like to assure you that we will be doing all we can here in County Durham to support Ukrainians forced to flee their homeland. Last week, we were notified by the Department for Digital Culture, Media and Sport that we had made it into the shortlist of the UK City of Culture 2025. This is a fantastic achievement with County Durham being just one of four areas to make it to the final stage from an original list of 20 locations. The impact of securing the title cannot be underestimated, and it would bring enormous social and economic benefits, not just to the county, but also to the wider region. I am so proud that we have made it this far, but I'm not surprised. Our area has so much to offer, and it's not just about our stunning landscapes, amazing heritage and vibrant cultural offer, it's about our ambition and our tradition of coming together to achieve something incredible. There are just a few weeks left to go now until we hear which area will take the title, so I would encourage you to do all you can to show your support for County Durham. It really would be amazing to be able to declare ourselves UK City of Culture 2025. In other news, I'd like to congratulate our neighbourhood warden team on winning the litter initiative of the year honour at the Keep Britain Tidy Network Awards. The award is in recognition of a scheme developed by the team to use education to tackle the problem of littering, with offenders being offered the opportunity to complete an online course as an alternative to a fixed penalty notice. The past month has also seen the launch of two important new facilities in the county, which include a new hub in Sherburn Hill, which will provide support to young people who are leaving care. It will provide a safe, supportive community space where care leavers can go to seek advice and support and also meet with others who share their experiences. And looking ahead, next month, we see the return of the Bishop Auckland Food Festival, one of the highlights of the county's cultural calendar, and this year visitors can once again look forward to dozens of stalls selling local produce and freshly prepared goods, as well as family entertainment and cookery demonstrations by some famous faces. The festival takes place on Saturday the 23rd and Sunday the 24th of April, so please, if you can, head along. Thank you.[1452.01][1452.01](Music)
Do any members have any questions on the report? Can I ask the council to note the report? Oh, sorry.
Remind I had to use the handsets?
Did you use your handset, councillor? Right, okay. It's just come up now. Okay.[1476.01][1476.01](Beeep)
Can you hear me? Yeah, because I can speak louder. Thank you, Chair. I'd just, I would like to thank the leader for her report, which was wide-ranging, and particularly I want to ask a question on her report that focused on what's happening in Ukraine. So, a couple of questions, Chair, which are, first of all, I wondered whether the leader, in her capacity as leader of Durham County Council, had written to the Ukrainian ambassador holding out the Durham County Council's hand of support, which she mentioned. And also, I wondered whether as well, whether there had been, Chair, any request to Ukrainian-speaking residents to come forward for translation purposes, if that becomes necessary when refugees are relocated in County Durham. I'm particularly concerned, Chair, having the shadow portfolio for children and people's services, about children and school staff, Ukrainian children who may come here, and school staff in particular, having that language support, which I think will be necessary. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, councillor Gunn. With regards to a letter, the procedure for that would be that it would come from the chairman, so, but I am more than happy to do that if people think it's appropriate from the leader as well. But the normal protocol is, when it's something like this, that it is the chairman who would send that. With regards to interpreters and the Ukrainian help, there is a group working with that. I've had emails from people volunteering who are Ukrainian interpreters, and we're also fully aware of, are working on the impact to have children. I've spoken to families in my ward who have got visa applications in, and they're taking children in, so we're aware of that. And I know that John Pearce and Alan Shield as portfolio holder, and Gordon Elliot and Alan Patricson are working on the whole thing, and we will be keeping people regularly updated. I believe an update was sent yesterday, and future ones will come as and when we have the information.
Thank you. I believe there's a letter being drawn up, I'll find out if it's been sent yet. Okay, thank you. Councillor Kay?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Thank you for your report, leader. This isn't about letter writing. Can you hear me, by the way?
Yes.
This isn't about letter writing. I was contacted on Sunday evening by a Ukrainian family who live actually in all places, Cowdon. The lady of the household had travelled into the Ukraine and brought her elderly parents out, struggling to get the visas through the Ukrainian, I don't know what the equivalent of the Home Office is, but she, she got that and she got them home, she got them over here to Cowdon. They're 75-year-old, both of them. They didn't want to come. So, 75-year-old, the husband has had a stroke and has limited mobility. They don't speak English and they're scared. They're scared of what they've left behind and they're scared of what they're coming to, because they don't, they don't know what the UK is like, other than what their daughter has told them. So, I'm working with them.
The question is, councillor Kay?
If you could just bear with me, Chair. Councillor Gunn asked about the possibility of Ukrainian speakers to assist with the resettlement of Ukrainians into the region, and the lady is an incredibly eloquent English-speaking Ukrainian and has offered her services to that very cause. So, I would hope I could offer her forward, and I can see, I'm pleased to see that the chief executive is writing down what I'm saying, or presumably he is anyway, because I want, I want to further that. And finally, to my question, we get there in the end. If anybody saw the news last night, there was an item about resettling Ukrainian refugees in relation to the sponsors that had already held up their properties, their houses, they were going to take these people in. So, we've got this, this man who was kind of like correlating, if you like, the, the Ukrainians.
Twenty question, please, councillor.
There were 29 families willing to put Ukrainians up in accommodation they had. How many had been actually settled in? None, because of bureaucratic problems with, in line with the local authority.
Okay, okay, councillor Kay. You answered all your questions, though.
Don't worry, because I'm going to, I'm going to finish it now, if you'll just bear with me, Chair. I wouldn't talk across you, so please don't. Are we doing all we can? Are we doing all we can to settle Ukrainian refugees into County Durham as soon as possible? And I mean as soon as possible, not writing letters. Let's get on with it.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks, councillor Kay. It was one of your members who asked us if we'd wrote a letter, so that's what I was responding to. responding to. Yes, we are doing everything we can, but we do have to follow the guidance that we're given, so we're doing that. We've got the task force in place, we're ready to take action as soon as it occurs. And if you'd please send me the details, if you'll email me the details, I'll make sure it gets through to the task force and someone contacts that lady. So thank you.
There's no one else who registered, so can I ask the council to note the report? Thank you, members. Can we move to item five, questions from the public? No questions have been received for today's meeting. Can I move now to item six, petitions? No petitions have been received for today's meeting. Brings us to item seven, the Boundary Commission review of parliamentary constituencies. Can I ask the head of Legal and Democratic Services to present the report?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, members. This report seeks to update you on the progress of the Boundary Commission's review of parliamentary constituency boundaries, particularly in relation to proposals for County Durham. The report recaps the aim of the review, to ensure that each constituency has between 64,724 and 77,062 electors. You'll recall that at your meeting on the 14th of July 2021, council requested that Constitution Working Group meet to consider the proposals and seek to agree any points of principles of common ground. Constitution Working Group met and agreed principles as set out at paragraph 16 of the report, and these were submitted to the Boundary Commission by way of letter dated the 30th of July 2021. In February 2022, the Boundary Commission published all of the responses received during the first round of consultation, and details of the responses for County Durham are appended to the report at appendices three through to 11. Now, there is a second period of consultation which closes on the 6th of April, and there's an opportunity for people to respond to the comments and counter proposals submitted to date. Just to clarify, there are no changes to the Boundary Commission's proposals as originally presented in June 2021 at this stage. As part of the second period of consultation, the Commission are holding a series of public meetings, and there will be two in the North East, and details are set out at paragraph 21. Once the second consultation has concluded, the Boundary Commission will analyse all representations from the first and second stages of consultation, and will consider if the evidence presented persuades them to revise their proposals, and it's at that point any proposed changes will be published and will be subject to a further four-week consultation period, and that's expected to be towards the end of this year. Constitution Working Group met on the 9th of March, and the details of the meeting and their considerations are at paragraphs 23 to 25 of the report. The group agreed to recommend to council that it reiterate its position as set out in the letter dated the 30th of July 2021, and also call on the Boundary Commission to note the strong opposition to the proposals and the importance of maintaining community ties. The draft letter is at appendix 12, and the recommendation is for council to approve it and request that I, as the head of Legal and Democratic Services, submit it to the Boundary Commission prior to the consultation closing on the 6th of April 2022. Thank you, Chair.
Can I have a move-up, please?
Thank you, Chair. I'll move the report and the recommendations at paragraph seven. I won't go into any more detail than has been gone into by the head of legal. If you've read the appendices, you will see that all four formal political parties in this chamber, i.e. Greens, Labour, Liberal Democrats and Conservatives, have put in official regional representations. The Constitutional Working Group therefore thought it pointless to try and push for consensus among the CWG and indeed among full council, because we clearly wouldn't get it, and therefore the letter that we are proposing to send, the appendix 12, really makes fairly common sense points on which I would hope we could all agree, namely that we shouldn't be splitting very closely related communities like Crook and Willington and Spennymoore and Tudo. So that essentially is the representation that we are making today in this report, and I would hope that all members will approve the report and the recommendation at paragraph seven. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
Chair, I'd just like to formally second the report. That was the agreement that Constitutional Working Group...
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak on the report?
No one registered.
No one registered. Can I ask the council to agree the letter attached at appendix 12 to the report, and in doing so, request that the head of Legal and Democratic Services submit the letter to the Boundary Commission before the consultation closes on the 6th of April 2022. Thank you, members. Can we move to item eight, Ferry Hill by-election, statement of returning officer. The report is provided for information only. Okay, members?
Green.
Thank you. Item number nine, motions on notice. There are no motions for consideration. Brings us to item 10, questions from members. No questions have been received from members for today's meeting. I get used to switching this mic on and off as well. That concludes today's business.[1747.44][1747.44](Applause) Thank you, thank you. Before the meeting finishes, I would like to thank everyone for taking part, and to those members of the public and media who have watched this meeting, thank you for your attendance. The broadcast will confirm it has ended, so if you just wait, can you please bring your handsets and leave at the table when leaving the chamber? Thank you all for your attendance. Thank you.